Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the October 21st, 2025 Post Falls City Council member, uh, meeting. Shannon, please note all council members are present. Tonight, we have a couple of announcements. This Halloween, we invite families to join us at City Hall to trick or treat on Friday, October 31st from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. City Hall will be decorated and our staff will be handing out candy, making it a fun and safe event for everyone. The city's residential fall cleanup will take place on Saturday, November 1st. This is an extra garbage pickup day for Post Falls residents. Please make sure all items are bagged or placed in your garbage tote and set out at the curb by 6:00 a.m. And please note that the first council meeting in November has been moved to Monday, November 3rd due to Election Day. We had received some criticism because we had held, uh, council meetings on Election Day and people felt that may negatively impact someone's people or some people's ability to vote. So we're going to move that, uh, in our next council meeting up to the Monday as opposed to the Tuesday. Tonight, we do have one presentation with Cootney County Fire and Rescue Levy Override Information. Please come forward and give your names for the record, please.
Good evening, uh, I am Pete Hawley from, uh, Cootney County Fire and Rescue.
I'm Justin Capoff from Cootney County Fire and Rescue.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, we appreciate the opportunity. My name is Pete Hawley, as I said, um, interim fire chief for Cootney County Fire and Rescue. And we're here to provide just a little bit of information on our upcoming ballot measure, the levy override for Cootney County Fire and Rescue. Uh, Cootney County Fire and Rescue is a proud organization providing, um, emergency medical services to the cities of Post Falls, Dalton Gardens, Fernand Village, a lot of the unincorporated areas in the county. Um, we are an all hazards organization, providing emergency services for everything from fire suppression to, um, uh, emergency medical services, including paramedicine and critical care. Uh, we also do technical rescue, uh, swift water, uh, drone program. We have, uh, we're, we proudly answer the call virtually no matter what the call is. So, um, I just wanted to give that a little bit of a, of a introduction to who we are. We are, uh, taking to the ballot a levy override for the fire district. It's a $6 million permanent override levy, uh, on the November 4th election. The measure would cost taxpayers approximately $43 per $100,000 of a, of tax assessed value. Uh, funds will maintain staffing, support growth, and maintain our service levels as they currently are throughout the district. KCFR is committed to a responsible use of these funds, um, and, uh, inch, and using these funds for, to ensure timely and professional emergency response moving forward. KCFR has a longstanding fiscal, we have longstanding history of fiscal discipline. We, uh, constantly operate within our budget. We, uh, fund our, um, majority of our capital and, uh, projects through budgetary measures, savings, things like that. Uh, we've never asked for a levy override in our 25-year history. Things have changed for us over the last several years, including in 2021 Idaho House Bill 389. It permanently capped our, but how much our budget grows. And, uh, I know that you guys are feeling that as well. Um, we, it's also changed how funding from U R Ds, um, affect our fire district and, uh, ultimately has affected our finances. Uh, we've evaluated and, and made necessary changes within our organization. We've held ourselves accountable. We've, we've, uh, we operate with a very lean budget, um, and maintain that, uh, that budget without compromising service. That's the current levy request is our next option for, uh, finance, our financial, uh, future and maintaining that, uh, that level of service. Over the past 15 years, a little bit of history, KCFR's levy rates fluctuated quite a bit. Um, at its peak about 10 years ago, we were at a rate of $2.01 per hundred, $1,000 of assessed value. In 2022, it declined all the way to $0.87 per $1,000, uh, less than half. That decrease was driven by a number of things, including rapid regional growth, um, uh, inflation that drove prices and, and housing, um, valuations, and also, uh, the impact of House Bill 389. This is all kind of a perfect storm that kind of drove the levy rate significantly down. But it, uh, uh, with our proposed levy rate, our proposed levy, the rate would rise to $1.40, which is still well below the highest levy rate we've seen in the last 10 years. We're definitely seeing some challenges. The impact of House Bill 389 has definitely restricts how much our budget can grow year over year. And, uh, it doesn't keep pace with our inflation or our service demands. Uh, we have, uh, U R Ds that are also, um, sheltering some tax revenue that comes to the fire district. So it's also limits, um, how much our, our budget can, can, uh, grow regardless of the service requests into those areas. Uh, the levy would help us maintain that service, um, for the community. The, uh, one of the big questions that we always get is why is, you know, can growth pay for growth? Um, we do and have established impact fees. As you know, impact fees can be used to enhance service in the form of capital purchases. Uh, it cannot be used, they're highly regulated, uh, and they cannot be used for, um, operational costs, uh, utilities and, and personnel costs, things that are reoccurring. Uh, so it does help, but it doesn't ultimately solve the problem. House Bill 389 limits the, um, the amount of, uh, the new construction that comes to the, to the taxing district. It limits how much of that is even accessible to us. So in essence, it, it compounds a problem where growth isn't, isn't regularly paying for itself. Also, in addition, that, that, that House bill does limit the revenue from the U R Ds as I previously spoke to. This is a, unfortunately, it's something that's happening throughout the state. We're all feeling it. Uh, multiple Idaho fire districts, including some of, some locally have, uh, been influenced by that fiscal, the, have been influenced by that impact of House Bill 389 and are seeking levy overrides. Um, I feel like this is a, um, it's something that we're seeing more common, um, at, in our current state. So with the current, uh, current legislation, growth cannot entirely fund itself. And so it brings us to the point where we are seeking a levy override. This is the last slide, so, uh, homeowners receive, uh, an estimated for, uh, on a $400,000 property, about $14 per month. Uh, these funds are going to be used to maintain staffing, support growth, preserve the service levels as we, as they're currently, as they currently are. And, uh, one thing that we, what, one of the benefits that I, uh, an un, kind of an unforeseen benefit of this is it's really moving a lot of the, the responsibility to the local taxpayer. Instead of having the, the legislators on, on, on the Hill and, and Boise deciding how the taxes are being allocated or who's paying taxes and for how much, it really shifts the responsibility to the local taxpayer. And with that, I think comes some accountability for us to make sure that we're transparent, that we're collaborating, that we're willing to, to, to answer the questions to our local taxpayer. So, uh, we're doing that, um, and we're open to that. We're taking the phone calls, we're going out and making sure people are informed. We want to make sure that we have an informed tax, taxpayer going to the, the polls on, uh, November 4th. Uh, we are also inviting the public to an open house that we're, we're holding next Tuesday, the 28th at, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, so we can, uh, answer additional questions and provide more information. So with that, um, we again want to just express our appreciation for this opportunity to come and share this information. Uh, and I would stand for questions if you feel that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to say, Chief, that House Bill 389 is not new to us. I think you referenced it probably four times in your presentation. Uh, school district, I mean, everybody's referencing it. Our state legislators feel that was a great piece of legislation. Uh, when you're on this side or your side, uh, I don't think it is. The limit, limiting to 10% or 90% on new growth and annexations to 80% on closed urban renewal districts has a devastating impact on taxing districts. And I know the cities have, uh, tried to work with the state legislators and I'm hoping that, uh, your organization has and continues to, uh, point out that this needs to be addressed. On the, uh, impact fees, I think we were probably the first city to be able to collect impact fees for fire districts and, uh, I know that was a work in process, but I'm glad we got to that point. And then on, uh, urban renewal, uh, fire districts now have the option to opt out of urban renewal districts, any new districts. And I would love to say, I don't want you to opt out, but I would also say that I would be very surprised if you didn't opt out, uh, because you are watching out for your operations and I think it's important. We don't have, we have two existing urban renewal districts right now and you can't opt out of those because they're already open. But I would anticipate seeing changes in the future on that. So, um, all in all, I guess what I'm saying is many things have changed and it's made it very difficult. You know, growth probably doesn't always pay for itself, but it used to pay for more of itself than it does now. And I know it's put you folks in a tough position, so, uh, you know, we feel it as a city with our budgeting needs and I know you folks do as well. So I appreciate the oper, or the time you have taken to come and explain it to us. And like I said, and some of those items you talked about, we've heard many times, so it's nothing new to us.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we know that you guys are a great partner for us and have, and have been, uh, working with us on numerous, on many of these fronts and we, we appreciate that, so.
The relationship between, uh, City Post Falls or Police Department and Cootney County Fire and Rescue, I think is critical, so.
Yeah, and it's second to none, honestly. We have such a great relationship with, uh, PD at, like, second to none. It's the envy of a lot of the, the neighboring departments.
And I would just like to say, I've talked with other mayors and maybe they have their own police depart, or fire departments and they're having some challenges as well. So it's, it's not anything new or unique to our area. So, uh, you know, good luck and, uh, hope things work out for you. Any other questions, Travis?
Just real quickly on the dollar amount, so $6 million permanent levy means it renews year after year. Is there any adjustment for yearly inflation, costs of, cost of equipment, things like that, so we're not in this position again?
Uh, yeah, so we've, uh, we've, we have, uh, with the information that's available to us right now, we have done some budget analysis and, and that's why the number of 6 million, uh, is to make sure that we're not in this situation again. It allows us some adaptability moving forward, uh, building in, uh, apparatus replacement plans, uh, facility improvement plans. Uh, those types of things to ensure that we're not in this, uh, this, this again. And again, um, you know, if we find ourselves in a spot where 389 gets addressed or something else happens, it's, uh, that will, um, affect us in a, in a, in a different way. Um, it gives us the flexibility that we, you know, we don't necessarily have to take the 3% every year. We can, we, we have that, uh, that, uh, mechanism and we'll evaluate year over year over year to make sure that we're, we're not in this position again.
So it is a 3% annualized increase or automatic, are you concerned?
Yeah.
Okay, maximum, maximum.
Yeah, the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And what's your current annual budget?
Uh, currently, we're, uh, just shy of 20 million.
Okay, so an extra quarter, almost-ish. Um, and then the 1.4 for the levy rate, so you said our levy rate currently is 1.4 or is currently 87?
Our current one is right around, uh, 0.9.
0.9, okay.
And, um.
We're going to add 1.4 to it?
No, it's going to rise to 1.4, so it's about 0.5.
Okay, and then to Counselor Ziegler's question, if the 6 million wasn't what you needed anymore, you would down-regulate your existing budget, not edit this, um, permanent levy?
I, sometimes I'm, as an interim, I'm still getting up to speed on a lot of things. I apologize for that, but I'm not sure there's a way for us to adjust the levy rate down. But we, but we are able to analyze on a yearly basis and not take the 3%. And so that levy rate would continually, would continue to drop as it has over the last 10 years.
And if I may be slightly more difficult than normal, um, is there a reason that you're looking for 6 million forever and not using a different funding mechanism that perhaps is not forever? Maybe like five year or something like that? That's just, that's hard for voters to get behind.
No, absolutely. So, uh, that, that was a, that was a discussion point and, um, happy to get into that. It was probably about a 15, 20-minute conversation. The, the digest, the Reader's Digest version of that is, is that, um, we, um, we believe that we can show that we have a fiscal responsibility and have historically been there. And we, we want to project, uh, much to Councilman's point is that we want to make sure that we're not in this boat again. Um, it's expensive to run, uh, run a levy campaign, informational campaign, uh, every two years to do that. And on top of that, we want this, the, we're proud to offer the services that we offer and that's at risk if we're regularly having to go to the, to taxpayers and ask for the, the, um, the funding mechanism to make sure that we can maintain our staff. And so we, we want people to, to consider KCFR a destination fire department and not a stepping department that will take people over, maybe across the border or to another department where they don't, um, aren't navigating some of these challenges every two years.
I go, um, how many individuals do you guys serve in your coverage area? Do you know, approximately?
Yeah, approximately 70,000.
70,000, and how many chiefs do you guys have in the KCFR?
Uh, currently administrative chiefs, we are four, it'll be five chiefs.
Five chiefs, okay, okay. I was talking to one of my neighbors who's a firefighter and he, he said there were six chiefs and that sounded like a lot for 70,000 people. I mean, usually a city of 100,000 would have a single chief and maybe an assistant chief? So I'm just, just curious.
Yeah, we, we are regularly comparing and looking at benchmarking against other departments that are similar size. Um, that, those types of things have been evaluated recently and that's why we're seeing, uh, there, there's historically a couple of chief positions that are not currently filled. So we're, we are constantly in, in making sure that we're evaluating, uh, that to make sure that we remain efficient, but also, uh, fiscally responsible.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question about fire engines, but if you're here at the end of the meeting, I'd love to ask you that, so.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll be here.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you, thanks for your time. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight? I know we're going, we are going to remove item E from the consent calendar.
Yes, and we'll bring back, uh, that item at a future meeting.
No other amendments?
No.
And we do not need a formal motion on that, correct, Chris?
We do not.
Uh, are there any declarations conflict? Could you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the October 7th, 2025 city council meeting. Item B is payables, October 8th through October 22nd, 2025. Item C is the Cootney County Public Transportation Agreement. Item D is the North Place East Third Edition Subdivision Plat.
No E.
Oh, no E, got it. Okay, I have a question about C, if I may. Are we there yet?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so is this an annual agreement that we enter into? Sorry, hopefully there are just quick questions.
Item, uh, on.
C.
C, yes, that is an annual agreement that we enter into with Cootney County.
And is the total federal funding in this match, does that correlate to the funding spent in Post Falls? Because it says that this is, in the agreement, it says this is a match for federal funding, but it doesn't say how much we're matching or what the federal funding is or how Post Falls figures this out, because it's a county.
Yeah, so currently they come up with what they consider the amount of funds there, they are short and they divide that out and it's done on population to Cord Lane, Dalton, Hutter, and City of Post Falls.
They being the county?
And City of Cord Lane, yes, uh, City Link for Cootney County.
And then we're matching 100% of the federal money that we're getting?
No, the match, it's, uh, on the federal, there's, um, some different matches depending upon the grant. I think the highest match is, I want to say 7%.
Okay, okay. How much more are we spending this year on this agreement than we spent last year?
3%.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second, motion second, further discussions. Roll call, please.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Worship passes, thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings, it's followed by unfinished business. Uh, we have none. New businesses, a new business, rather, we have one item, Drinking Water System Master Plan Contract.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My first item on the agenda tonight is, uh, proposed contract to, uh, complete a water system master plan. Uh, a bit of master planning history. We have an existing master plan, which was completed in 2017. And this master plan laid out a capital improvement plan, um, based on recommendations from the engineer. And since that time, we've been off completing several of those projects, including some that I've listed here. So since adoption, we have added two new source wells, my apologies. Uh, Well 10, which is, uh, on the Police Department campus, right next to our Well 6 location. We also added Well 11 at the base of the West Dam Pipe, which is also near our Well 9. So two new sources were recommended, we've completed those. The plan in the existing, uh, master plan also laid out rehabilitation of our Well 3. And the photos on this slide are actually the old Well 3 before it was rehabilitated. And mid-construction of that project, updating the electricals, uh, making sure, adding emergency backup power for it. But the well itself was, uh, evaluated and deemed to be, um, appropriate for the continued use. We didn't need to drill a new well, but we brought everything else kind of up to modern standards. Uh, it also recommended doing the same thing for Well 4 and that project is ongoing. I think Jackson has given you a couple updates on that Well 4 rehabilitation project, but very similar. It started with a, a smaller, um, wellhouse block and, and it's, it's being modernized as well. The existing plan also included recommendations for an ongoing pipeline replacement project. Make sure we don't end up with overly aged pipes in the distribution system. So we're, uh, doing that on an ongoing basis as well. I'm not going to tell you that we did everything in this plan and there's a reason for it. I'm also not going to tell you that it was, um, perfectly, uh, laid out and predicting where the growth would be and, um, any issues that we might see. So, um, there were some, some, as we have gone on since 2017, uh, there's been some development, um, changes. And this plan had laid out, uh, it had looked at kind of the northwest area of town as being ripe for large industrial users. And we haven't seen that development up there as had been anticipated. So there were some pipeline projects laid out that, um, not seeing the growth, we did not implement those because we might be building, uh, a bridge to nowhere, so to speak. Um, and that wouldn't be very judicious in our, um, uh, expenditures. Uh, we've also learned a bit about emergency operations. The Highway 41 project, um, some of the work going on there, uh, highlighted that our main transmission lines between that Well 10 and Well 6, um, well sources and our Riley tanks, which are up in the Highlands area, were cut off, um, while they were going through there. And operators and the contractors developed some contingency plans to make sure continue, uh, continued, um, operations. But it was a bit of a challenge and so we realized that we wanted to see if there were any other of those areas that, that might present a similar challenge in the future and could we do something, you know, loop a line so that we wouldn't face the same thing. So about a year and a half ago, we started talking about, uh, the potential for completing our next master plan. Um, we also, uh, wanted, uh, while we're looking at it, look at hydraulic modeling. Adding the new well sources has changed some of the pressure zones in the area and, and wanted to account for that. So like anytime, you're going to be taking your car in to get some work done. Soon as you, uh, open the hood, uh, might as well make sure it's going to be ready to go on that next road trip. So if we're getting some work done, we want to look at all of the core areas that we would look at in a master plan. Uh, condition assessment of all our existing infrastructure, uh, like I said, updating the hydraulic modeling, um, looking at the new KMPO, uh, development, um, forecasts for where that development might incorporate, um, come and incorporate that. That would all lead into a capital improvement plan, looking at the next 20 years and also laying out a financial plan, making sure we're going to be able to adequately meet those expenditures when they're expected to happen. So in talking about, uh, the next plan, next step was going to be engaging a consultant for this effort. We had a selection committee, uh, five of us, uh, myself, our chief water operator, our assistant chief water operator, uh, the supervisor of our environmental, um, services program, and then our public works director, John Beecham. We were able to pull off of the consultant roster. That's a, a consultant roster where we, we deem them pre-qualified for work of this type. There's a whole bunch of different categories and it kind of cuts the, um, the lead time on, on, uh, you know, not having to throw as, as wide of a net. We can pull off that roster. Um, we reached out to several of those, uh, firms and conducted interviews and there was general consensus for Welch Comer to be the, the qualified firm that we wanted to work with on this next effort. So starting with our, our base, um, uh, areas that we wanted to look at, we developed a very detailed scope. That scope is included as Exhibit A in the contract that is in the packet. Um, you might notice that some of that gets very down into the details. Uh, but we wanted to kind of put everything on the table so that the end of this effort, we could go back through almost as a checklist to make sure, oh yeah, that one thing we were thinking about, the majestic wellhouse that we want to see if, if there's, you know, can abandon it type of a deal, that, that we've hit all those, those benchmarks. So it's a very detailed scope, but intentionally so. So the financials for this effort, uh, the scope as laid out is $286,000. Uh, that is a not to exceed. Many of the items in there are, um, charged at an hourly rate. And so if, um, uh, they don't use that, that full amount or if it's an item that we don't authorize moving forward with, um, and some of the specifics, if you have questions, we can go over those. Uh, it, it, so this is a not to exceed price. Uh, I am, I am including a 10% contingency, just in case maybe we get into an area that needs a little bit further evaluation. Uh, to authorize that, we would go through a contract amendment, so it's not just, uh, an open checkbook of extra money for them. Um, it's just a bit of a buffer, so we don't have to keep coming back to you every time there's a small thing that we might want to add. So that's what that contingency would be used for. So the total authorization request is $314,600. Uh, this will be funded through Water Master Plan Update, uh, GL Code. We anticipate that this would take more than one fiscal year. So, um, there would be a, a request coming in the next fiscal year budget. Um, these are longer efforts for sure. So we have the funding for what we anticipate this fiscal year and there'll be a follow-up one, um, for, for next year. Uh, I will say, I, uh, looking back, I should have included a next steps slide in here. Um, just give you an idea of, of the timeframe. You probably have a hint since I said this would be a multiple fiscal year effort. But if authorized, uh, we would be, go back with the consultant and really start tackling the technical aspects of developing this master plan, laying out the financials of it and then engage the council in a, in a workshop-type environment to lay out everything that we've learned, really what we're seeing, determine if there's any, um, policy, uh, elements that we would need input from council on, um, before final adoption. Uh, I would anticipate, um, that's going to be on the short end, maybe 10 months from now. Where we are in the, in the water gear, as I say, is, um, it's not a great time to go out and get our peak, uh, demand scenarios out in the collections, or out in the distribution system. So we, we have plenty that we can go work on this winter, go collect that data, pressure testing and everything next summer and wrap up a plan to bring, uh, in about 10 months to, to start engaging council with what we've learned. What questions?
On the cost, you made a comment, it's two building cycles. So you've got 314,000, you say that will give you the money you need and you'll bring back another item next year. That would be not another 314,000, that would be any portion that was not spent this fiscal year that you anticipate spending in the next fiscal year, is that correct?
If I understand your question, Mayor, uh, that total, the 314,600 is the total amount for this effort. If you go look at this exact GL code right now, it will not have that $314,000 in it. So, um, I don't want to present something that if you went and looked, you said, well, this is unfunded, we don't, we don't have the, the 314.
Excuse me for interrupting, Craig, I'm sorry. My, uh, my question was that you're not going to come back and say we need another 314 for the second year? This is the total project cost?
Total project.
Perfect, thank you.
So are we, um, doing this master plan now because we completed many of the projects? Because there were, uh, the City of Post Falls grew or didn't grow in ways that were unanticipated in the master plan? Or because the master plan is due to be renewed in 10 years?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yeah, all three.
Giving you another example, uh, one thing in the development changes that we have seen.
I totally believe you. I have been told that my questions make our council meetings too long, so a yes, it's perfect, thank you so much. And then, um, so my agenda says drinking water and some of the agenda reports say Drinking Water System Master Plan, but then the slideshow says water. We're talking all about the same thing, right? I was a little bit confused as I went through it, that maybe drinking water was only part of this water, but we just add drinking and remove it sometimes here and there?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Questions?
I'd move to approve the Drinking Water System Master Plan Contract.
Second, motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Worship passes, thank you. Thanks, Greg. Next item tonight is citizens issue, issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda and wishing to speak. Please come forward, name for the record and you should have a clock. Is the one on the DS?
I'll just wave.
Okay. What is it, four minutes, five minutes?
I think we got four.
Four. Four. We got four, but I'll cut you some slack. But when we get close, we'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Jacobson. My name is Raven O'Toole. I purchased my home in the Meadow Grove subdivision in July of 2019, one of the subdivisions referred to in the case study discussed prior to this meeting. The city of Post Falls entered into contract with Robert, Mark Robertson, Will Lammett Real Property, the developer of Meadow Grove. The CCNRs were recorded with Cootney County on 12/27/2017, and the final PUD development agreement of Meadow Grove recorded on March 9, 2018. While I have been told that the city council has been briefed on the disaster that has unfolded since the signing of these contracts, I can assure you the most important side of the story is that of the homeowners. The subdivision process that Mr. Seale spoke to earlier today was not adhered to. The development milestones, although defined, were overlooked, exception after exception was made. After listening in on the case study, I hope we can all agree Meadow Grove was overlooked, and we need accountability. We need a solution. As homeowners and taxpayers of the city of Post Falls, we place our trust into the hands of hired and elected officials to ensure the city maintains oversight over the contractual agreements they enter into with developers. The PUD agreement clearly dictates the city's expectations of the developer. Condition number one for Meadow Grove stated the subdivision was to be developed in three phases. The park was to be completed in Phase Two. The city allowed Mark Robertson to move forward with Phase Three, when the park was still a two-acre parcel of dirt. I understand changes can be agreed upon, but where was the oversight that the park described in the PUD agreement was completed? The PUD agreement and CCNRs clearly state that a private homeowners association must be created, nonprofit incorporated. These documents were recorded with Cootney County, but they were unsigned, unexecuted, nonexistent. I learned tonight that the city doesn't have to ensure the HOAs they mandate are functioning HOAs. The city has a responsibility to maintain oversight of the contracts they enter into. So, tell me how a backyard graded playground structure anchored in concrete footings was ever approved to be in a park and per the CCNR is accessible to the public? Homeowners notified Robert Seale and John Manning back in late 2019 and 2020, and over the last five years, multiple times regarding this attractive nuisance. I was told the pergola needed a permit, but why not the swing set? Why is this dangerous structure still there? The homeowners received a letter in the mail several weeks ago stating Mark Robertson has filed a quit deed with Cootney County, deeding the park and common areas to Meadow Grove HOA LLC. That HOA was dissolved earlier this year. That HOA was never part of the homeowners. We had no access to it whatsoever. In fact, we were denied all accounting records. We were told that the development was still underway. That HOA ending in LLC was entirely different than what was established by Mark Robertson. It is not what was recorded with the CCNRs. Matt Affana was the HOA, and he was not a homeowner in Meadow Grove. He was not the developer, all of this overlooked by the city. Please understand the homeowners have never had a say. We could not do, we could do nothing when the weeds overgrew, when the water to the sprinkler system wasn't turned on until the week before the Fourth of July, only because we called the city to encourage them to act on Mark Robertson's neglect. We could do nothing when a pipe froze during the winter and flooded the park. We can do nothing about the failing irrigation that floods the backyards and the homes adjacent to the park. We could do nothing about the lien that was placed on our homes September 16, 2020, because Mark Robertson wasn't aware that Matt Affana hadn't paid his bills. What do the homeowners do about the fact that the irrigation systems have not been backflow certified since 2020? What can the homeowners do about the potential thousands of dollars of repairs that will be needed to ensure the homes and yards do not flood? My concern has never been about paying a measly assessment fee each year to maintain the common areas of my neighborhood. My concern has been and still lies with the fact that the city of Post Falls allowed Matt Affana to act on behalf of Will Lammett Real Property LLC and allowed this to ever happen to us in the first place.
Yes. You have four minutes. So, go ahead. Are you almost finished?
I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am not standing here today asking for you to assume a park that was always intended to belong to and be maintained by the homeowners. I am not asking you to build us the pickleball court that was promised or complete and any of the, and complete any of the other line items in the PUD agreement, nor am I expecting you to go after the man that stole thousands of dollars from the homeowners. I'm asking for accountability, and at minimum, a review and assessment of how the city wishes to move forward and help the homeowners of Meadow Grove receive the common areas in good working order, so we can form our HOA, and finally, after seven years, take ownership.
Well spoken.
Thank you.
We've had this probably three or four times. We've discussed this. I know there's issues with the private park, as we talked about earlier, and I know there's things that should have been done differently, but I will ask our staff, our attorneys, take a look at it. I know they have on several occasions, and see if there's a way that we can come up with a resolution for you. But again, it's one of those things where if it's a private park, the city's a bit limited, but I understand what you're saying as well. So, it would be nice if we could go after the person or people who were supposed to put these in. Unfortunately, we can't. But again, we'll follow up, and we've got your contact information.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mrs. O'Toole a few more questions about the situation? Would you mind? Sure. So, you referenced the HOA not being set up correctly and the order of the development not following to the T, the process that was in the development agreement. Are there any other defaults, difficulties, deficiencies within that piece of property that the city was aware of and has not fixed yet? Or has we have not come to a resolution with the developer either? Maybe that has to do with your irrigation or has to do with any of the other building?
To my understanding, the discussion that I had with the city really solely was focused on this ADA walkway that hadn't been completed because it was city, and everything else was private. So, all of the concerns that the homeowners had brought to the city prior to today have been based on an oversight of where, who was allowing the builder to do certain things within this park, who was signing off on things.
Okay.
The playground structure is a big one.
Sure.
It's very unsafe, and it is in concrete footings. And I had called notice to it back in 2019 and 2020 and said, this is dangerous, it's in a public access place, what do we do about this? And it was just overlooked and overlooked, and now it's just, it's, you can't, we couldn't even insure it as homeowners if you wanted to for liability. It's in a public space, which it needs to be in private space only.
If I may, all of your irrigation is not set up correctly. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's a lot of question about which subdivision maintains what part of the swells, because Matt Affana went to North Chase Place and assessed their homeowners' assessment fees, claiming that it was all one entity. So, the president of North Chase Place turned off access to our swells, thinking that he was paying our bills. So, and this was all stuff that was going on behind the scenes that the homeowners had absolutely no recourse over.
And so presently, do you have access to all of the right pipes that were approved by the city? Or is all the water going to the right HOAs currently?
I don't know the answer. I talked to Dan at Green Acres, and he assured me that once we moved forward and had some plans in place that he would help me figure out and get to the bottom of it. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And I think that's my only other specific question for you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm still curious about the follow-up from the letters that I brought up many months ago that were sent by Mr. Seale and I think Mr. Manley to the developer. Like, we knew that there were deficiencies in this development, and I think in those letters, we actually said, if we don't hear back at a certain time, we will pursue legal recourse. My understanding is that we did not. Is that correct?
We heard back multiple times.
Oh, I didn't see any of those emails in the file.
A lot of phone calls.
Bob, it's still coming up. Could you provide a synopsis, so Councilor Sigler can have the information be brought up to speed on what's transpired?
Like, right now, or?
No.
Oh, at a different time. Okay. I think based on what we heard today in our workshop and what the residents of this subdivision have brought forward and said, I know that it was referenced, that we've talked about it four times. I can think of one executive session where this was discussed openly and decisions were made. I think that there's other information that perhaps wasn't presented there, and I honestly think that, I appreciate that in 40 years and 40,000 people, we've never had this problem before, but I think that it's really evident that the city had the opportunity to help stop some of the situations that these residents now find themselves in, and the only option that they have is to pay thousands and thousands of dollars to investigate and help fix something that was really not theirs to even know about. So, I guess my request from council is more than just having Bob Seale talk about these phone calls that weren't doc, that I didn't see documented. I'd like to go back, if executive session is what is required, to talk about what more the city and the city council owes to this one group. I know it's a one-off, and then it doesn't happen often, but I think that that's actually more evidence that there's more that we can do to help be supportive of them. I know that we're not generally supportive of spending public dollars on private fixes, but dare I say, I think that the city had a hand in this, and I think it's our responsibility as the representatives between the city and the residents to think more deeply on this issue.
So, if you could provide us information, council, we'll have that information provided to everybody, and if council feels that that's something that we should be discussing further, I know we've had one executive, I think we talked about it after the executive. I know there's been another conversation as well, but if council wants to pursue it, that's absolutely fine.
I think that's my question right now. And the other time that it was talked about, I brought it up just to ask for the workshop, which was acquiesced too, so.
I'm 100% agreeable to get any information and revisiting, for sure.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Asa Gray, and I'm the Elections Director for Cootney County, and I'm actually here tonight to talk to you about the November 4 election, which you have already heard a little bit about from that great presentation from KCFR. I'm specifically here to let you know about the early voting opportunities that Cootney County offers for this election. We're holding early voting at our Elections Department office in Coeur d'Alene on Third Street. It started yesterday, and it continues Monday to Friday, eight to five, through the end of next week, so through Halloween. It's a great opportunity for you all, or any of your constituents, any of our constituents, I should say, to take advantage of that option of in-person voting in case they may be unavailable or busy on Election Day, or especially for those people who have careers that shift work doesn't allow them to necessarily have the flexibility to get to the polls between eight and eight. It's just a great option for that. And then as well, just to let you know that we are always looking for additional poll workers. We're doing pretty well for this election now, but if you know anyone who's interested in being a poll worker in the future, or if any of you are interested when you're not on the ballot, we would love to have you join us in the future to work the polls. It's a great option just to meet a lot of your constituents as well. We've heard that from many people, that it's just a wonderful time to meet their friends and neighbors. So, if you have any questions for me about any of that, I'd be happy to answer them, but I just wanted to bring that forward tonight.
Just one quick question. What's the time commitment for someone to volunteer? I'm sure there's flexibility, but just so we can get that information out.
Absolutely. So, to be a poll worker, it is a full day on Election Day. It's the full 14-hour day, so you're there from about 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM. You do attend a training in advance of that that is scheduled. We have multiple options for that at each election. It's about a two-and-a-half hour training, and then those are really the time commitments involved. Outside of that, we just ask people to communicate well with us as we reach out, and we have poll judges in charge of each location that do a really good job of reaching out to their poll workers and informing them what the food situation is at that location, what time to be there, what setup looks like, things like that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's so nice to put a face to the name. I think I've emailed you many times, so it's so nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Next item up tonight is Administrator Staff Reports. We have two Utilities Division Regulatory Compliance Update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My second and last item for the agenda this evening is just wanted to provide a bit of, a bit of a check-in on regulatory compliance and the efforts that are undertaken within Utilities Division to keep us square and on the straight and narrow with the regulators. A bit of compliance history, there's a lot on this, but breaking this down, we have our discharge permit, which covers, that's the IPDS permit, which covers discharges from our water reclamation facility. We received a new permit in early 2024. As part of that permit, there are about a half dozen documents that have to be updated, every permit, and submitted for review and approval, which we did. Toxic management plans, quality assurance project plans, some acronyms that you probably have seen in your own work. We also have annual reports related to that, and we're coming into annual report season. We have reports due, I call it annual report season, December, January, February, which really lay out the activities over the previous year. Those get submitted to DEQ again for review and approval. Earlier this year, we had our MS4 permit application. The MS4 system is that area of town where stormwater discharges directly to the Spokane River. We have a permit that covers those discharges, and that was up for renewal in, the permit had to be submitted by April of this year. So, we completed that effort. Thank you, Mayor, for your assistance in getting that submitted. That was accepted, and that permit is currently what they call administratively extended. So, while DEQ is working on our next permit, we're basically just bound to the existing requirements of that. And then over the last six weeks, we had three different inspections by Idaho DEQ. Our industrial pretreatment program was inspected, that MS4 system was inspected, and our drinking water system had what is called a sanitary survey, basically just reviewing all of the infrastructure again. So, a lot of inspections recently. Sometimes these inspections can get into the weeds a bit, wink, wink, but we do appreciate the compliance assistance and partnership. We try and be on that front end of working with the regulators and calling upon their expertise in how we can stay in compliance with all the requirements. So, the beat goes on, as they say. No rest for the weary. What's coming up with regard to regulatory compliance? We're going to continue to work on permitting our community forest and a recycled water permit for that. As part of our discharge permit, we have to do a local limit study, and with the new facilities now being online, what that's looking at is making sure that any industrial or commercial discharges wouldn't negatively impact any of our treatment that we've put a pretty big investment in, we would all agree. So, evaluating that system and making sure we can treat everything that comes to us. We are actually a regulator ourselves somewhat. There are three significant industrial users that we write permits for, again, to make sure that they're not discharging anything that would harm our system. So, we have several of those permits and small recommendations made by DEQ to make those a little bit more clear, so we're writing those permits. We've only been two years into our discharge permit, but we're already having to start the cycle of preparing for our next one. We do sampling throughout, I mean, every week, every month, and then there's some sampling we do once per permit cycle, and we're starting that very soon. Our next MS4 permit, when DEQ starts working on that, we'll be negotiating and discussing those requirements with DEQ, and then, as I said, those annual reports. So, a lot of this work goes on behind the scenes. There's a lot of people who have a role in this compliance, and when things go well, it can be pretty, we're just busy bees working behind the scenes. Occasionally, there might be a press article, and this is a recent press article that you might have seen in the Coeur d'Alene Press Report, "Some Idaho Wastewater Treatment Plants Violating Pollution Discharge Limits." There's a key word on this headline.
Some.
Some. Within Idaho, there were 56 facilities that did not have pollutant violations in the last year. Sort of highlighted in our blue there, you can see Post Falls. So, I'm incredibly proud and excited to be able to share the list and be on this list of, you know, a record, and it highlights that investment that we've made and the hard work that goes into it. And as part of that, a bit of a shout-out and thanks. Our environmental program is kind of the bookkeepers to make sure we're getting, you know, everything submitted on time and tracking things throughout the year to make those annual reports easy. Our operators, chief operator and their teams, we have lab staff that's conducting sampling and analysis, pretreatment staff, a lot of work amongst the collection system to go talk to people and make sure nothing bad is coming to us, or if it is, how can we help you eliminate that? Surface water, again, technician on our drinking water side, operators and administrative staff who really support the Cross Connection Control Program. That's that program where we're testing uh, annually the backflow devices that, that homes and businesses have. And then we partner with other city departments as well. The uh, the Streets Department, uh, Engineering Department and some of their construction inspections go a long way in making sure that we're um, staying compliant with our requires, requirements. So wanted to provide a quick update and stand for any questions on that.
It's uh, good to see that we receive that kind of uh, report. You know, we've always stated that we're good stewards of our water and I think this just proves it. So uh, you folks have done a ton of work out there. And I know the, meeting the requirements, especially on the discharge, is, is tricky at times, uh, always difficult. Uh, I, I tell the story that when Mayor Larkin was alive and was mayor and we were going through this process, one of the penalties, if you will, for not meeting their requirements was the city could be fined a million dollars a month and the mayor could go to jail. And I told Clay that was all right until he retired. Then I didn't want to see that happen anymore. But you guys have uh, spent a significant amount of time and effort and dollars and uh, it's a job well done. So uh, you know, I'm proud to see our name on that list.
Best part of my job is bragging on the teams that, that do the work on the ground.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Transportation Investment Program, twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-two.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. Robert Paulus, City Engineer. Doesn't want to do it that way. There we go. So this evening, I'm giving you an overview of the KMPO's fiscal year twenty twenty-six to fiscal year twenty thirty-two Transportation Improvement Program. In addition, I'm going to give you a little bit of the highlights of the current status of the Ratham Prairie Area Transportation Study. This is mainly for educational purposes. There's no action that needs to be taken by you this evening. So the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization each year has to put together a Transportation Improvement Program. The, these programs are projects that are being funded with the aid of federal and state dollars in the Cootney Metropolitan area. These projects are also listed on the State Transportation Improvement Program. KMPO had a open house on the Transportation Improvement Program in early September of this year. Late September, the Cootney County Area Transportation Team had a presentation and looked over the program and provided a recommendation to KMPO for adoption of this current tip, for being short on it. Uh, KMPO adopted this tip uh, two, two weeks ago at their Oc- October meeting. In terms of our area, over the next five years, we're going, or over the next seven years, we're going to see approximately three hundred and two million dollars spent on transportation projects with federal aid involved in those projects. That does not count projects that we have developers doing or projects that our Street Department or Engineering is doing with uh, impact fees. Out of that three hundred and two million dollars, ninety-one percent of those costs are towards construction. Uh, two point two percent is development, that's putting together the plans and specifications. And about six point four percent of that is for right-of-way acquisition. The funding sources, it's about a fifty fifty split on this current tip with fifty-four percent of it being federal, forty-six percent of it being match. One thing I'd like to highlight on that is that um, fifty-four percent federal, a lot of that is, or the forty-six percent of the local match is due to uh, state projects which have a higher match dollar than a local project does. The local jurisdictions, when we have a federal or state-funded project, most of our transportation projects have a seven point three four percent match. So for every hundred thousand dollars, we pay seven thousand three hundred and forty. Drawback to that on the other side of the coin is that when we do take in federal aid, we do tend to pay a little bit more for engineering to develop those projects and we also tend to pay a little bit higher cost in uh, the project construction. But we still get a considerable reduction. Most other states in the United States pay about a twenty percent match. Idaho has the seven point three four percent because we have a lot larger amount of federal lands within the state. Going to go over some projects which are regionally a little bit more significant to the people who live in Post Falls, that they'll be driving through them and then also cover the ones which are within our city as well. Uh, first off, Lancaster and Hutter Roundabout and the Hutter Union Pacific Railroad Crossing. Both of those projects were actually on the last stip, but they just got completed this last year, making the safety improvements on Hutter Road up by Lancaster. And then the Lancaster-Hutter Roundabout, which actually opened up for traffic last week. So trying to keep this accurate, but uh, things change faster than I can put this together and get it out to you. Uh, Hayden and Meyer Roundabout, Post Falls Highway District has been working on the design of that for, over the last year. Uh, that project is in right-of-way negotiations and the plans are approved. It is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-eight. Uh, over in Coeur d'Alene, uh, City of Coeur d'Alene received a grant to improve four traffic signals, improving the coordination with them by updating the uh, traffic controllers. That was a safety grant of one point one million dollars and is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-seven. And then on Atlas Road, uh, they have some safety and capacity improvements going on on that road. Four point eight million dollars. That was a twenty nineteen grant application that City of Coeur d'Alene got that. Twenty twenty-seven is the year they get to start design of it, but there is not a construction year assigned to that project yet. Um, up on State Highway fifty-three, there's a couple of projects from State Line to Hauser Lake Road and the brush to mile post eight point three where the State of Idaho is going to be doing a little bit of shoulder widening, putting in lightning, lighting for safety improvements and putting in turn pockets. And uh, I'm not missing something. And then uh, the State Highway fifty-three Pleasant View Interchange, which was down for forty-five million dollars, is currently under construction. Just wanted to provide a little bit more detail on that. Uh, that railroad crossing historically had about six hours a day where the gates were down because the trains were going through the crossing. This project puts a crossing over the top of the railroad, so it's grade separated, increases safety and then provides on and off ramps to State Highway fifty-three. It will also be closing McGuire Road and Beck Road at its completion. Uh, between Beck Road, McGuire Road and Pleasant View, over the last five years, each of those intersections saw about twenty to thirty collisions in a five-year period. So um, this project should hopefully reduce collisions in that area significantly.
So I'm so sorry, when this overpass is done, you won't be able to get on the fifty-three at McGuire or at Prairie? It will only be at Pleasant View?
That is correct.
Oh, I did not know that. Okay. That better be like the best overpass slash on-ramp, off-ramp ever.
It's gonna be better than the death trap.
I would definitely agree because I intentionally avoid or have been avoiding it over the last few years.
Yeah.
Because if you're pulling a trailer that rail crossing and worried about whether or not your back end's too close to the railroad tracks is a scary thing. Recently, there was some uh, strike with contractors in the area that had a potential negative impact on this project. Luckily, the strike ended when it did because the contractor had originally lost its window to put the girders in place on the railroad tracks. But when the strike ended, there was some scheduled maintenance on the rails, which allowed a thirty-hour window for them to get the girders put in place. Uh, these are pictures of the girders in place and being put in place quite recently. According to my discussions earlier today, the project, they are currently pouring uh, the concrete decking on the bridge. The project is about three months ahead of schedule and is can, anticipated to be construct, completed in mid twenty twenty-six. So that's uh, good news for the local area. Couple of projects, a little bit closer into the City of Post Falls, uh, Chase Road. Um, we have been developing this project for quite a while. We got that grant in twenty nineteen. The plans are approved for that project. We are still waiting on completion of a, an agreement with the Burlington Northern Railroad. Problem with that is we currently do not have a construction date for that project. Um, we are going to be looking at a couple of other grant sources that might allow us to get that project back on to track and built a little bit sooner than later. That project is really a safety improvement, puts in multi-use path, improves the school um, speed zone and crossings in the area and puts in missing uh, pedestrian improvements. Over on the northeast part of town, uh, Prairie Avenue Widening. This is a Post Falls Highway District project that uh, got started back in twenty nineteen. City of Post Falls has been uh, providing assistance towards that project because about half of that project is now in the City of Post Falls. When it started, it was only about twenty percent. Uh, the Prairie Widening between Meyer and State Highway forty-one is scheduled to go out to bid sometime this winter. Plans are done and they are finishing right-of-way acquisitions at this time. And then you have the Prairie Trail Underpass, which is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-six. Uh, no right-of-ways were required for that and that project should be going out to bid in early November. And all of that should be wrapped up in time for a proposed medical center hospital up at the south, what? Southeast corner of Highway forty-one in Prairie in twenty twenty-eight. Here in Post Falls on the I ninety Business Loop, which is uh, Spokane Street and Celtae Way from Spokane back over to Bay. Uh, ITD has plans for uh, twenty thirty-one construction to redo the asphalt on that roadway. They are currently in the design phases of this project. Staff has been in coordination with ITD discussing some of the items which are of concern to the city. Uh, some of those would include an old pedestrian underpass at Spokane and uh, Celtae Way that needs to be filled in so that it's not a future liability if that was to collapse. Uh, ITD is looking at updating the traffic signals, putting in a new traffic signal at Spokane and Celtae because of the age of that equipment and the fact that it regularly gets hit by trucks. Uh, the equipment at Idaho Road and Celtae Way is over twenty-five years old and needs to be updated as well. Uh, I have on here a signal warrant analysis for the current temporary signals on the on and off ramps at Celtae Way. That is not part of the I-Tip project. However, in discussions with ITD, staff has asked um, ITD as part of the I ninety forty-one interchange, whether or not either of those signals could be made permanent. ITD has said that they will take a look at it from a safety standpoint and traffic movement. In particular, uh, the city sees a potential need on Fourth Avenue as an entranceway into the downtown area off of Celtae Way. That is a project which is in our current transportation master plan as well. And a couple of years ago, we were looking at putting in a roundabout at uh, Fourth Avenue and I ninety. I ninety itself, uh, ITD is looking on I ninety McGuire Road to Spokane Street of doing a resurfacing project in twenty twenty-nine. And then you have a number of other projects, I ninety forty-one interchange. I'm going to get into more detail on that. Uh, the I ninety Greens Ferry Road repairs, a little more detail in the future slides as well as I ninety widening. Uh, ITD is doing a port of entry study. The current way station at the Hutter Rest Area, they would like to relocate closer to the state line. So they got five hundred thousand dollars to do a study to see where best to locate that and whether or not it makes sense to get that moved. Uh, ITD is also moving forward on a new interchange at US ninety-five and I ninety. Uh, they're projecting in the tip for twenty twenty-seven, there's a chance that that project could be sped through and moved and gotten to construction sometime in late twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Paulus, did ITD decide on which plan they wanted for the I ninety widening through Post Falls?
So on this, this is only covering the widening from forty-one to ninety-five.
Okay.
A portion between Spokane Street and forty-one has not been decided yet. Um, our best guess, ITD doesn't have an idea, but our best guess is probably about five years out from now. ITD may finally get to the point of saying, we need to move forward. The big item is when does the state come up with the dollars to move the rest of the study forward?
Thank you.
So does that mean they're going to spend money resurfacing part of I ninety in Celtae and then five to ten years later come back and tear it all out?
On the Celtae Way Business Loop, it could mean that. Uh, you could also see if ITD was to speed up their timeframe where the timeframe to redo Celtae Way might get moved. Being more than five years out, I think it's a little bit speculative, but their goal is to at least have the plans in place which could help out if they were doing a widening project in the Post Falls area. And one of the things that the city was able to do, ITD put up the money, but we put it in with our recent Spokane Street project to pave all the ways up to Celtae Way, which come twenty thirty-one will be helpful in how you stage construction and hopefully reduce a little of the impact of, of the rest of the paving.
Okay.
I ninety widening, State Highway forty-one to US ninety-five, under construction and there's been a lot in the news about the loss of all the trees. Uh, this project is anticipated to be a four-year construction project. Uh, we've seen the trees go away, they're starting to move some dirt. Utilities are being relocated and there's some of the widening that is being done to get the dirt into their correct locations. Staff was involved and provided uh, technical support with the rest of the design team and making sure that areas of interest to the City of Post Falls, that none of our utilities or other roadways were being adversely impacted. There was very little impacts to the City of Post Falls infrastructure. Most of the impacts were taken care of with the I ninety State Highway forty-one interchange. I think the most fun we had in that design was picking colors for the retaining wall. Greens Ferry Overpass, this is on the tip and there's a little over a million dollars that's going to be spent on this bridge. Uh, something that was discovered in, on this bridge within the first five years of its existence is that the connections of the railing to the concrete was causing pop-outs. It was not the best of design, so ITD had their structural bridge team take a look at it and they got it on their program to make repairs so we don't have concrete falling on uh, cars down below or that the rail becomes unsafe. There was also an item which was brought uh, to Engineering's uh, attention by the Parks Department on some uh, gravel material that was coming from the mechanically stabilized earth wall on the side of the bridge. ITD did take a look at it, found that it was not a big issue, but you know, good eyes on the Parks Department on seeing something and bringing it to others' attention so that the state could take a look and make sure that the bridge was safe. My favorite, one of the past six years, I ninety State Highway forty-one interchange. Couple of pictures of what it looked like uh, last year and the year before. I don't know if anyone wants to make a pleasant memory or not. It was historically known as malfunction junction, was one of the bad, bad nicknames for it. This is what it looked like about a month ago, just before reopening and its new configuration to traffic. And here's a picture of it under traffic and uh, some of the team that helped get it constructed. Right now, the westbound off and e- uh, the westbound off ramp and eastbound on ramp are not properly configured to this interchange. They are still making some modifications based upon filling in where Highway forty-one used to be. The goal and anticipation is that the westbound off ramp will be opened to this new interchange prior to Thanksgiving of this year. It is a little bit optimistic, but there's also a good chance that the new on-ramp to eastbound will also be done within that timeframe. And then the Ratham Prairie Area Transportation Study. This has been going on for the past three years. Uh, Phase one reached out and had fifty-four different design alternatives on how to make improvements to the transportation system of the Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, Ratham area for both east-west and north-south traffic. Originally, this was called the Pell Study for Planning, Engineering and Linkages. Prior to that and going all the ways back to around two thousand, two thousand and two, it was known as the Hutter Bypass. It got expanded with this to look at a larger area. Uh, Phase one again was fifty-four design alternatives. It then got whittled down uh, by December of twenty twenty-four to fourteen design alternatives. The team then went back and did a little bit more looking at those and refinement of the design criteria and ended up with a recommendation to move forward into design, to, into Phase three of four design alternatives, which have two north-south alternatives and two east-west alternatives and one which I call an alternate, but is really a design element that could be included with any of the other four alternatives. The current plan is to come back in the spring of twenty twenty-six with um, screening, screening results and an open house. The last open house was held in September. There was one in Coeur d'Alene and one in Post Falls. Each of those had around sixty to sixty-five people in, in attendance and city staff was a- Each of those had around sixty to sixty-five people in attendance, and city staff was available at both of those to talk with citizens who had questions regarding city-specific issues. I'm going to go over briefly the four design alternatives and one design element. This is Alternative B. Picture isn't clear for reading. It doesn't need to be. It's more to show you where it is. So Alternative B, which is a design element, is to widen US ninety-five in Coeur d'Alene from Appleway all the ways up to Highway fifty-three. Instead of the current two-lane road, it would widen it to a three-lane in each direction. It would maintain the traffic signals where they're at. It would, it would make improvements to traffic reliability along that corridor, but it has very little impact to east-west traffic in the area. And one of the other difficulties with it is it does not provide redundancy to the overall transportation system as we grow. That is why it is not a standalone alternative and is one that the group thinks is a good supplement to possibly another alternative. One big advantage to this project is it does not require any right-of-way acquisition by the state. It's the only one in all of the alternatives that gets that way. Design Alternative D, and the next one is going to be Alternative H. Both of them are very similar. Both of them, you could say, is a refinement of the old Hutter Bypass. Alternative D puts in a interchange on I ninety at Hutter Road and another one on US ninety-five near Boca Road, and it would then construct what is essentially a local roadway, something similar to Government Way in Coeur d'Alene or Mullen Avenue in Post Falls between Greens Ferry and State Highway forty-one. A five-lane roadway, thirty-five to forty-five miles per hour, with bicycle and pedestrian facilities on both sides. The big drawback to city staff in looking at this is that the challenge they also saw in this is that it is most appropriately to be implemented as a local facility. That means they don't think it would be something that the state would really take the initiative of. The worry we have with that is that means it could involve the city of Coeur d'Alene, city of Hayden, city of Rathrum, city of Post Falls, Post Falls Highway District and Lakes Highway District. And trying to get a project like that put together in a timely manner between six jurisdictions could be very difficult to implement just from a cost standpoint, but then the coordination between six governmental agencies as well. One thing we did mention is that there is a potential and a value to this if one of the east-west alternatives shows real promise as handling near-term solutions and then allowing this to develop as a local alternative over time and the state still participating in the on and off ramps. So that's something that they're going to be doing, is they're going to be mixing all the alternatives, but that was something that we saw as a potential and recommended to them. Alternative H doesn't look very much different. I'm going to go back. There's D again. There's H. It doesn't change much other than in the zoom. But what really changes is the roadway itself. Instead of being a local roadway, it's now a separated roadway like US ninety-five in Coeur d'Alene or State Highway forty-one here in Post Falls in that you have two lanes in each direction and a center median of grass in the middle. It would be designed to handle fifty-five to sixty-five mile-per-hour traffic. It would be different than what you see in the area now in that it would have grade-separated interchanges on about a one-mile space at Pole Line Avenue, Prairie Avenue, and then continuing north from there. This shows some good promise, as well as the previous one, in handling north-south traffic and providing redundancy to US ninety-five. The thing it does not address is east-west mobility and redundancy to I ninety. It does help relieve and maintain capacity on Highway forty-one as well as US ninety-five. Alternative M. I'm going to change the orientation so north is up and makes more sense for people to take a look at. This one takes a kind of a stair-step approach across the prairie. People would get off at Pleasantview Road. It would involve a new local highway from Celtae Way up to just north of Prairie Avenue. That would be a four-lane separated facility with a frontage road on both sides. And then it would stair-step across the prairie and become a, still a four-lane highway, but a local access roadway on one side of it. One of our worries about this site is that it does come very close to the city's land application properties. We are very protective of that because any land we lose to highway is something that is not easy to replace. And not only do you lose the land itself, but then you also have your setbacks. So you lose an acre. It could really be more than an acre that you lose in the ability to apply land application. It does show a much larger impact on the Rathrum land application property. We were recommending that they see if there's an alternative layout to that area to not impact the land application sites. They do propose that Hutton, or Hayden Avenue be the location of the local access road paralleling it. If they were to do that, it would not impact the Post Falls land application property at all. And then it'd just be, how do you deal with the Rathrum land application property, which we would be putting our stuff on anyway, so it does impact us.
Yeah, don't we do their, how is their land different? I mean, it's all our wastewater that we treat, right, and have to?
Yeah, that's correct. Under our agreements with Rathrum, we treat their wastewater. Their property and our property in the future both get used for land application of the entire treated effluent.
So they just have to buy the land for theirs essentially?
Yeah, so it'd be the same impacts. If, if any of that acreage is lost, it needs to be made up so that we don't lose the ability to do that application.
One thing that could be looked at too is if you're losing a area in here and if you were able to purchase an area in here, that could make things more contiguous. There are options, but it's something that we want to make sure they're aware of that losing land app's property is detrimental to Rathrum and Post Falls. Alternative N. Again, I'm going to turn it so it's a little easier to see. Similar, however, the big difference is it puts the freeway, the highway section on the north edge of the city's land application site between Greens Ferry and Idaho and then runs it along the city's land application site next to the railroad between Greens Ferry and State Highway forty-one. That has very serious negative impacts on our property, and we did not provide support towards this option. I hope that was a good brief overview. I could go much longer on it, but stand for questions that you have.
That was a lot.
Thank you. Great information.
I have a quick question on the, the impact to our, to our land app sites. If they do have an impact on that, would the state take their funding and replace that land for us? Somewhere nearby as part of right-of-way acquisition?
There is a right, land acquisition or right-of-way acquisition process where they have to go into negotiations and provide us fair and justified offer as to what the land value is. We do have the ability to agree or disagree with that value and the reasons why. So it is possible that, you know, we can lay out a statement as to, you go with this route, here's what the impacts are and here's what the mitigation is, not just the value of the land, but our long-term operations as well.
I would love to see something where if they're going to do that, they replace the same acreage for us rather than just giving us some money and telling us good luck.
And for us, it also means making sure that acreage is in the right location because we don't want two, three, four different parcels scattered around because that becomes much more expensive to get the water to as well as much more expensive to maintain and operate efficiently.
Can we just apply it on the road?
We're shipping down the state. Thanks for that. Great information.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Next item up is mayor and council comments. I feel like a broken record, but Halloween's coming up. Little, littles in costumes running around. It's going to be dark. Hopefully, most people will come here to trick-or-treat, but please drive carefully. You know, they, they get out early and they stay out late, and let's see if we get through a trick-or-treat season with no injuries to children or anyone else, for that matter. Council, just an update. As you may recall, we had a presentation or a citizen comment from our assessor at our last meeting. That night, I did receive a call from the county commissioner chairman Bruce Matarri. The next day, I received a call from Commissioner Duncan, both very supportive of us. The next day, I received, we received, actually, I received, I guess, maybe you did too, a fourteen-page email requesting public records. It was the longest email I've ever seen in my life. And I know staff is responding. They're keeping the county posted on that. So it is, it is being handled, but I told both Commissioner Matarri and Commissioner Duncan, if it's something the county wants to talk about, let's do it through the right channels and sit down and visit. So, you know, the, the olive branch is there, but again, I just think it was totally mishandled last time, so. But staff is on top of it. Counsel comments?
I cannot go first if someone else has something to say. I'm happy to wait.
Okay.
Does that mean it's a good one?
So if I may ask, we have subdivision plat approvals on our consent calendar, but to my recollection and searching of our agendas, we don't do PUDs or special use permits. Those don't come back to our consent calendar? Is there a reason that the city council has to approve a subdivision plat that, as has been explained to me previously, is really just like box checking to make sure that it meets all of these like specific requirements and then planning and zoning approves it? My understanding of PUDs and special use permits is that they have a similar process, that they're just meeting requirements, but we're not required to do that on our consent calendar?
Sure. The short answer is, Councilwoman, the state code requires the council to finally approve subdivisions or divisions of property. That's one of the exclusive areas that's reserved to the council for the final decision on. So when you approve the final plat, that is the final step, although it's somewhat mechanical at that stage through our process. And my understanding is we've delegated some of those other decision-making authorities to the Planning and Zoning Commission to handle that in their capacity.
So we delegate the decision-making to planning and zoning, but the state requires that we approve it, but we don't review it as city council as like an agenda item?
For the, I'm sorry, for the plat versus the PUD?
The subdivision plat, yeah.
So the sub, like, like, I, I think it's the way the city code is set up. I, I defer a little bit to Warren on the history on some of those decisions, but again, that is the decision that has to be reserved to council.
Yeah, Chris is essentially right. So state law requires that final plats be approved by the council, signed by the mayor, approving the final division of those lands. Every city that I'm aware of, every county I'm aware of, that's largely a perfunctory check-in. Staff typically reviews all of the technical requirements that the, that the roads have been built or bonded for, that the water and sewer has been built or bonded for, that the lots meet the legal requirements. They're required to certify to you that all of the requirements have been met, and then you take action based on the certification of the engineering staff that those things have been done.
But it's a public hearing at the planning and zoning level or no?
So approval of a preliminary plat is a hearing item at the planning commission?
Yes.
That preliminary plat approval can be appealed to come to council if somebody disagrees with the preliminary plat approval. Once the plat is approved, that's the go-ahead to the engineer who's working for the developer to start doing the final plat preparation. So what you're seeing on the consent calendar is the work after all of that work has been done. So they've gone out and pinned all of the corners of the lots. They've either built or bonded for all of the improvements, and then they come back to staff with another application that says, "We think we have all of our ducks in a row. Can you review and make sure that we've done everything correctly before these things are finally platted?" So this is outside of the hearing process. It's, it's a different, a new step for subdivisions. That doesn't apply to other things because there's not a land division in the other items.
At the time of the preliminary plat public hearing, do all of the boxes have to be checked in?
Different boxes.
Different boxes.
Yeah, so the, the final plat review is really technical review, making sure that all of the engineering items, the stormwater calculations are correct, that they're designing the soils to hold the right amount of water. It's really technical review at that point in time. The earlier, the preliminary plat approval, which is saying, "We're going to allow you to move on to the next step," it's really, the boxes at that point is, is there water? Is there sewer? Are you putting the roads in the right place? Do the lots, are the lots going to be the right size for the zone?
And have you met the requirements of the subdivision code?
Okay, people have a lot of feelings about plats and subdivision plating. And when we're asked to approve it in a consent calendar, it, if I'm going to put my name to something, I want to be sure that we were reviewing all of it appropriately. And so then, when it is something that goes through planning and zoning, like special use permits and PUDs that don't come to city council to be in our consent calendar for approval, I was just hoping for clarification on how those two things are different because people have very big feelings about all three of those things.
Sure.
Okay.
And they, and they are different.
They are different.
The last step is really a technical review that all of the engineering calculations and design requirements have been met.
Really, what I'm wanting to make sure is different is what the preliminary subdivision plating hearing at planning and zoning is not what is being, it's not like a reasoned decision that comes back. Okay, okay, thank you.
That's a different thing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes? Thanks, Warren.
We do need executive session.
For how long?
Fifteen.
Twenty minutes.
I move to enter an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven four dash two zero six A to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent wherein the respective qualities of the individuals are to be evaluated in order to fill a particular vacancy or need. This paragraph does not apply to filling a vacancy in an executive office or deliberations about staffing needs in general. Further, there is no action will be taken during the session and the session will last approximately fifteen minutes.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Siggly?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Enter executive session.
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.